Okay, we're calling our meeting over. It's, uh, it's clock hour has arrived and we'll welcome all of our guests tonight. We're proud to see you here with us and we normally have invitation and pledge allegiance to start our meeting. So this time we ask each one to say. I have in the thought that we thank you for this study. Lord, we thank you for your many blessings to us. We ask you now to be in our meeting as we conduct business of the city. Or as we hear from people tonight, we ask that you might be in the midst of all of us. We have ears to hear and Lord, we ask that we always be in fellowship plus our community as we grow together and live here day to day. Christ name our great. As I said, we're proud to see each one here tonight and I got back into town. I've been gone since Saturday to the Lake of Municipalities Convention in Montgomery. I arrived back in town and someone said, "We heard that you wouldn't be there tonight, that you resigned from your proposals." My dear. Haven't resigned, haven't thought about it. So much I don't know where that came from. Anyway, I'm here for the duration. So don't anybody get anxious about why we resigning. I'm right here. In way of announcements before we get our agenda started, and it's just around the corner. The alumni banquet for Hamilton School will be held at the school library on June the night from 1:30 to 3:00. That is a cost of $10 per person and I'm sure that you'll see a lot of folks that you haven't seen in a long time if you make the banquet. We'd like to see the alumni association stay viable and strong. So come out and support our alumni association on the ninth of June from 1:30 to 3:00. Other matters that we might talk about, there will be road work scheduled again on Highway 29. That's the road leading to Bamaque and going slightly to the left. Some people call it old military road, but it's Highway 29. That work should begin in the next two weeks. It's gonna be extensive paving, maybe some asphalt torn up. I don't know exactly if the road will be passable at all times. So people beware, Highway 29 may be a little hard to travel for a few weeks. So I don't know exactly how that's gonna work, but wanted to make that announcement. Also, the council don't know this, but I'm gonna ask them to let me change the meeting for the first Monday night of June. I'm scheduled to be at the guest board convention on June the fourth and won't be here. If y'all wanna carry on without me, it's okay, but I'd like to be here at the meeting and I'd like to change that to the eleventh. However, if that's impossible, I do have an advertisement that's been run for Las Vegas. It's a public hearing that'll be held on June the fourth and normally there hasn't been anyone come to these meetings. But they are moving from their current location to motel six and someone will need to be here. Council actually need to be here on June the fourth to hear that meeting. It'll probably be 20 minutes, I guess, or so.
It wasn't gonna be that long, but I wanted to make sure. Scott, can we do that? See, I've already advertised it. I can't really change the date for the public hearing from the fourth.
Right, we can have the public hearing on the fourth and have the council on the fourth.
Okay.
Scott says we can do that.
We can't vote on the fourth.
If, if y'all consent to that. Moving the first Monday night meeting.
I'll make a motion immediately if that's what you need.
Make a motion.
Okay, that's.
Bob and Joe made the second. Welcome back, Bob and Joe. I'm telling you, don't even look good sitting here tonight. Bob and Joe's with us, probably. We got a motion and second on the floor to move our fourth because I don't, I don't be here before and I'd like to be here for our meetings. So we'd like to move that meeting to the eleventh. But I'd like the council to come and sit in on the public hearing on the fourth also. And that would be at six. Did you or not six or six? That would be at six. So y'all gonna have, have a double duty, but I'd, I'd like to ask you to do that for me. All of the big favor for that, I'd love to raise your hand, please. Thank you all for working with me. I appreciate it. Okay, let's get into our tonight's agenda and, uh, the special guest was Knight Tracy. His sister told me he was gonna come to one of our meetings and sit in one night. Out of the blue, he made his run today and got some.
I think this is our fourth since the campaign started. I told you a few weeks ago, I had to know what you have on the agenda. And I thought, I maybe shouldn't stay at home, but I, I promised you I'd be back.
You did.
I just say this, it's good to see everybody here. It's great to see a community that's this passionate about what's happening in their town. And I just want to tell the people of Hamilton, I've worked here two or three days a week for 26 years and what I'm doing now is totally different than what I've ever done before. I want to tell the people of this town how grateful and how welcome they've been in the last six or seven months.
Scott, you might want to make him take the minutes tonight. He's really used to doing this. Tracy, thanks for coming down and he's sort of working hard. He said, "Coming today, he's lost 34 pounds down in the streets." Hard work, isn't it?
Should've done this years ago.
I'd like to lose that new man for a while.
Get chased by a lot of dogs.
Okay, let's get into our agenda. Tonight, we have a recommendation to approve the minutes of the last meeting. It was held May the seventh, 2018. We need a motion on that. Motion, we need a second. Can I make a second? All in favor of approving our minutes? Thank you very much. Item number two, Chief Tim Wright would like approval to hire workers as needed from a pool of applicants. These workers will fill in when he needs to fill shifts. The pay will be $10 per hour. The worker will receive no benefits from this job, from this city. He's got a manpower shortage right now and having to pay a lot of overtime. Explain how the, the pool would work.
Yeah, we've had several certified guys from around the area come and want a job and we haven't had one available. So I come up with maybe we could hire some part-time until we get through this summer until we can get in the next budget year, maybe do, look at the budget again and hire some full-time. And we got a guy that's probably gonna retire soon and we got one that's off and vacation's coming up. It's just been, it's been rough. Had to pay a lot of overtime the last couple of weeks.
So those will be like standby workers that you.
Yes, that we can call to come in and fill a shift instead of bringing one of our guys back.
And I believe you're gonna team them up with one of your.
Yes, they would never be there by themselves or with two of them there at the same time.
So are these gonna be certified workers?
There has been several that's requested a part-time job. I would say if we could get three or four certified, yes, but I'm not gonna say, I don't know if we can get that many. And they can work part-time up to a year.
And did you find out how many hours, and I know your shifts are goofy, but how many they can work and still be within the limits?
We talked about that one 24-hour shift to keep on, like, under the limit of where we have to provide insurance coverage. I think it's what, 29 hours, maybe? So we're gonna try to keep it at one 24-hour shift.
For how many period?
Yes.
And I think we also discussed that if, if we had to, if they had to work more, as long as they knew upfront, you know, that they could work more and not get the, the benefits.
Some said, "Well, the four."
Forty-eight.
And we have a decision as part-time, as part-time.
Any other questions before we bring that to the vote? Then we need a motion.
I'll make it.
Jim made a motion, need a second. Bob and Joe made a second. All in favor of hiring from a pool of part-time workers to cover shifts?
Well, I'm gonna say no because I, I don't understand. It's your responsibility to hire and fire. And by giving, by the way this is worded, we're saying that Tim can hire them and normally, I don't understand why it's not working like it usually does. Because usually the mayor hires and then we vote to pay, but the way this is worded is we're giving you the approval to do it too. So my vote's gonna be no, but that's why I know you need the workers. I just don't understand why we're changing the way it works, so.
And we let you change, let you tell the mayor who you want him to hire?
Yes, sir.
Yes, and the mayor be doing the hiring?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, he has to hire first and then we go to pay. Because I'm not gonna win that vote.
Right, mayor, you'll be doing the hiring.
Okay. What we were trying to establish is that we can't hire two people to work over there because we're too men's short. It's gonna take a pool of workers to be on standby. We wanted to be able to establish a pool of workers that we can choose from to fill these vacancies when we have a shift that we can't fill. We hate to have one man on the shift at any one time.
Right, so normally you would list them, you would say A, B, C, D, and E, and you're hiring them to be the pool and then we would approve, we vote them, we would vote to pay them.
Yeah.
Right now, we don't know.
Well, I want, I want that rate of pay to be $10. I wanted to establish that that's what we're gonna pay these people.
That's what it saves you.
Okay. So, but you wanna know who the people are?
Before I repay them. But y'all already know it, so that's fine. I just want Tim to know that I understand. This just isn't the way we normally do it.
This is not normal.
No, I understand.
It's not a normal situation. We're short manpower. We're trying to come up with some manpower to have a good tire department that can fill its shifts. Right now, we can't do that properly. He's been working people one to a shift. We promised the public we wouldn't have that. So we're trying to come up with enough manpower to cover these shifts. And it's gonna take a pool of people to choose from and we're gonna have to pay them more than we can afford to pay them and we'll be working like as full-time employees with full benefits. So we need a pool of people.
Well, we're already paying overtime once a day.
We are already.
This is gonna be a lot cheaper than sitting down at $10 a night.
Okay, so you give me a pool of workers, I'll approve them or I'll disapprove them?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, is that understood? Alright. Okay. I think we're almost ready except value beats in our rep center. And I'd like to make a recommendation tonight that we obtain financing for our costs above what we have left in the bundling. And once we know what the exact bid is going to be, we should have numbers on that right away. I'm trying to obtain the opportunity to seek financing for the overage that we have. Can you understand what I'm getting at?
Yes, I understand that part. Now I gotta seek some numbers for.
I mean, we don't even, we haven't even agreed to do it yet. I mean, we've talked about doing it, but we haven't agreed that we're gonna go through with it, so maybe we, we don't have a price.
You know, the last time she said she was gonna give back, we'll just own the price.
Well, maybe a little ahead on this one. How about we table this one? Just give me a motion to table that. Alright, Jim?
How's that?
She can say that. All in favor? A little early on that. Item four, we have a recommendation to enter into an agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation for the intersection improvements at the airport road and US Highway 43 and resurfacing of Buccaneer Street from the airport up to Tempe Avenue Southwest. I motion to enter into an agreement with them to fund this.
They're gonna fund this?
Yes.
And we're. Oh, and we're responsible for anything that goes over their estimate and for all engineering, correct?
Well, they got, they told us that they were gonna do this work. The numbers we have are, is their best estimate of the cost. The city's thought on that was shown as zero.
If it's this amount or less, they need anything over, we would be responsible for it.
Well, I'm sure we would, but I'd be, I'd be willing to pay the rate, to pay it by that part. Can't be much. Eight hundred ninety-eight thou- nine hundred ninety-eight thousand, I might say nine hundred thousand dollars. It comes a little over. I think that's pay it, pay it near the million dollar.
I'm not sure we're gonna owe any money. It says our part's zero.
Yep.
But I think we're getting a bargain to go ahead and work with the stake on this contract.
I'll make a motion.
It's a brand. Okay. Herb second, all in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, midweek last week, I had a call from Mr. Wata Williams. He requested not to enter the extension layer of council and we're gonna give Mr. Wata the floor right at this time. You and this come in the podium.
I was thinking, my, this sort of small room, I didn't figure that out. But I appreciate all this audience I got here. I didn't think I'd have that many supporters when this thing first come up. But I appreciate them all being here. Y'all, this five mill property tax that's been proposed, at this time, I'm not sure that the people in Hamilton can afford that right now. And I tell you why. We got about two-thirds of the people here probably lives on social security and these people that's come up to social security at this time probably was the years that are garment plants and everything was going down. They didn't pay in a lot and they don't draw a lot. I got 52 rentals that people live in and 99% of them probably is social security paying it. If I don't collect my rent on the first day, this gets checked, you will not get your rent because they, they just don't have it. I mean, it's, it's that tight in Hamilton right now and it's tough on people. And, um, I know people gonna say, "Wata don't, you don't care about the kids," but you, you just don't know me. I really do. I told, Mr. Knight told me here that I've been supporting three children's homes for, uh, two of them for 45 years and, and one of them for 20 years. Every month, wait this month, me and my wife. So I do have a heart and I, believe it or not, in my business, I've hit a lot of doggone people. You know, if they can't pay me, they just don't pay me. Some of them, I'll take the small claims and most of the time, they just throw it out the door. And, and at this time, I just say to the council, this is not your business. I think your business at this time probably, what the people out here expects out of you is there's something about streets. I know y'all inherited a bunch of bad streets, but another two, three years, we ain't gonna build a bar and nothing fix them. They're falling apart. The next thing I think people expected out of y'all and everyone here, there should be a, a storm shelter built. Hold about 5,000 people have been on downtown Hamilton somewhere. Uh, I noticed the county done something I thought was awful stupid. They went right up there inside of the schoolhouse and built one over about 25 people. I mean, you know, they, they should be right in helping the city of Hamilton build one, being able to handle everybody. So, and, and another thing, I think the people expect y'all pick up and do it one way or the other. I know you claimed you didn't have no money, I'm sure you didn't, but people expects the city building one, you know, sooner or later. Where you buy one or build one or something, that's something they expect the Hamilton to do. But the number one big problem this town's got and our school's got is this right here. Drugs is terrible in Hamilton, Alabama. Everybody that goes to harm an employee, they won't pass the drug test. Well, I'm sure these teachers send people, kids home at night, you know, they ain't got no help at home and then they come back the next day and the teachers has to lead them through it again and again and again. So that's one of the big, big things we need to spend a lot of money on is it's harsh somebody, you might call it a, a drug czar or something. I mean, it's, you don't know what you're talking about it and we're, we're this close to Walker County. You know, this is the number one terrible county in the state. Well, it's gonna drift right into our county because of this, this drug situation. And, uh, and, and then the next thing that I tell you is the elderly people in this town, they, I mean, if they live in a private home, they, they can't afford more taxes. I mean, like myself, I mean, sometimes if you make, you have to hire somebody to sit with them, that takes a lot of money. And elderly people, a lot of them faces that very situation. So you've got to have some money to pay for that. So the money that I make off this rental property, I'm 72 years old. I still try to work 16 hours every day. I've been doing it for 45 non-stop years. And, uh, the ra- and the reason I do it, I'm trying to get something going for me or my wife. When it gets to where we're gonna be nursing home care, we can do it at home. And you gotta have money to do that. And, and, and I say these old buildings that I've got, that is my retirement. I mean, if you're a state worker, school teacher, what have you, you get matching funds paid in, you've got a good retirement if you stick in there long enough. Especially if you're a superintendent or something like that. You got an opportunity to make a lot of money. If you retire, retirement might be $75,000 a year. Well, I know they worked hard to get that job. I worked hard to do what I do. And I feel like it's just, uh, just won't pay part of mine in retirement, the way for me personally. But it ain't always about Wata. I think about all these other people out there. It's on the social security and what have you. And another thing I don't think y'all thought about, one time when I was on the council, we didn't think about it. We almost bought the veteran industrial park, but invoked in the rank and fight law and up in taxes. Okay, Run Davis come give us a little busy and we were all going down there and had a little supper. And they, when they pulled the sheet off the blackboard, they explained to us, they didn't feel like they could pay that kind of property tax. Well, just last year, uh, three mills went on and, uh, industrial, you know, commercial is doubled there. So put on another five, you're looking at eight and then that like 16. Well, you know, I don't know what Walmart, I mean, I don't know what they wouldn't be better off with one cent sales tax than the price of their building that's there. And there's other buildings in this town, glassware. We don't know how, how stable they are. Go up on their property tax that much, they might not be able to stand it. I talked to Jeffrey Fights, he said it, he has already penalized a penny on any new car sale, a penny. The other areas around here don't have to pay it. And I know we're looking at this thing like Hailwell, Winfield, other areas, you know, they pay more, more taxes than we do. So be it. I always said, "When it's on the council, lush one Hamilton and let them run their town." They don't tell us what to do and we don't tell them what to do. So, I mean, there just many ways to look at this thing, but I would close out and say it like this right here. To make it fair, I mean, we picking up school kids at the Mississippi line, Franklin County line, coming all into here. And we've even got plenty of personnel that works in the school system that does not live in this city. Okay, I say this right here, if you're gonna fund it, and I don't care if you put two cents a gallon on my gasoline, I don't care. At least put a one cent sales tax on it if you gotta do anything. Let, let, hey, listen, let every- It ain't gonna hurt Hamilton, Alabama because it's just gonna be more than the shops here anyway. I remember here in Alabama, put on occupational tax one time and everybody avoided, um, well, hang on, Dan Mob didn't have it, you know, for a little while. But that, that blew over. I mean, people's gonna shop where they live. And, uh, it ain't, it ain't gonna deter a, a truck stop or nothing else from coming in here and it's the most fair tax there is. When we went ahead and, and, uh, financed the industrial park, I made a motion and I took the blame for it forever and ever. The $7 that's on your garbage, I put that on there. The price of tobacco, which I had to quit at that time, we doubled the tax on it. All store license, we doubled the, doubled the store license to cover that bond issue. That bond issue was supposed to have been paid in 18 years. Far as I know, that tax is still on, it's been absorbed as something else and, and, and that's what's saying. Any tax that's gonna be put on, it is being absorbed. And, and on, on property tax, we, once it's put on, we have no control over it. Say the state of Alabama comes in and real crazy with property, this is gonna go up. You ain't never heard of property going down. My, my store there, I got the value at $365,245. Last year on that store, I paid $2,338.56. You know that's too much. Next year, they'll probably just raise the value of it up. They do that everywhere. And we got a lot of commercial businesses here that I don't know how much more they can stand. Cause you know, all of our lives were here, people couldn't afford the taxes in the northern states, couldn't afford the taxes in Florida. They moved in here. Well, are we gonna hurry and catch up with them, you know? Looks like it. So please, please think about going just with a sales tax or something like that. Don't hit the property tax again this year. So, please, please, think about going just with a sales tax or something like that. Don't hit the property tax again this year. I'll answer any question that's easy.
All right.
Wathas say this, I quit, the, the city council and mayor are not thinking about raising the tax.
I know, I know.
We're not thinking about it. We're here to represent all of these people, including you. And all these people here vote.
Right.
And they elected us. Like, when something comes up, these people should have a chance to vote on it. If they vote it down fine, if they vote for it, that's all right, I'll pay it.
You're right about that.
And anything that's passed here, if it is passed here on the, what, what we're talking about there, about the tax. Well, it'll be passed by these voters, not by us. We're not gonna have anything to do with it, let them vote. They're gonna pay for the election. We're not gonna spend a nickel on this election if they wanna let the people vote. Only fair thing you can do in anything is to let the people vote.
For a hundred years, we kept it and be it fair. This will be the first time the city council has ever intervened and did anything like this. How we intervened? Well, it, it took a government entity to put this on the bill for it to happen. They couldn't do it on their own. It had to be either the city or the county. It, it, a bar department, a school, nothing like that can, can put this together and let people vote. You've gotta ask for it. But you do have a parent right here tonight to go ahead and vote a one cent sales tax, and it's over.
Never vote for a one cent sale tax on the city of Hamilton. We've already done that, or tried to do that at different times. You're running all the business over to Tupelo and other places, these people already going over there to shop. When you put a one cent sale tax on, you know as well as I do, well, you're guess what the tax you got on? People right now in Hamilton are driving to Tupelo and to pulling them to buy gas and buy cheaper than what you're selling.
You can't stop them from doing that.
Well, I can't, I can't put a tax on them to make them go.
You've got people that's ashamed to buy a case of beer in Hamilton that arrived at Tupelo again.
Yeah, I guess so, yeah. But that's not what we're speaking about. We're speaking of everything. A sales tax or grunts.
I, I, I mean, that's now beginning.
To go to ten percent sales tax?
Ten percent tax.
I won't ever vote for it. Just wait two more years, I'll be off and making the next.
Well, but you got, until there's people here that's gonna be politics and then, huh? Well, I can't, I can't help that. They vote the way they want to, and that's what I'm gonna do. No hard feelings.
No, no, I got no hard feelings, I'm not, they're a part of our society.
I worked for Gene Sanders for five years when his kids, it's just as hard to end as it is now.
We already this way down at his place.
We already down on the phone.
I don't think any of these people here have passed no one cent sales tax.
I bet you would, I bet you.
Have any of you vote for a one percent sales tax?
I will over, over raising my property tax.
We're not talking about raising.
Well, what, what's that, if you thought about this, how many thought, have you thought about this a month or two, or six months, or anything, or just this happened?
Well, we've thought about it now for a while, that's for sure.
Okay.
We, we're not taking the responsibility. Oh, you're talking, you need to be talking to these people out here. All we're saying is, these people elected us, and we feel like they should be able, option to vote.
Gene, the other people elected you too, the ones that owns property, commercial property, rental property.
I own commercial property and rental property.
But you're moving so fast, you don't pay the taxes yet.
Go! Is that why it's more than ten thousand dollars, first taxes like today?
See, that's what I, I learned early on the beginning.
Appreciate everybody.
I thought as well.
Thank you, Wathas, thank you. Stick around, we're gonna, we're gonna, the spokesperson for the folks that have advocated the tax, uh, have a moment. We're not gonna belabor this too long, but just hear their point of view, you might be, you might be wanting to honor amen here a minute.
Well, I went, I went yesterday. Hey, Mr. Mayor, Samuel Ben is gonna speak in the hour.
Samuel is gonna speak on behalf of, of the five mill tax and the school.
I'm a preacher, I think I'll leave the mic. Um, so many things I love and appreciate about, uh, Mr. Williams over here. But, uh, there's one point that I think that he is dead wrong on, and that's to take the responsibility out of y'all's hands and saying, y'all need to stay out of this. And it's, you, you don't have any business in this. Highly disagree with that. And, um, I think that it is your responsibility to pass it on to the citizens of Hamilton, Alabama. To see whether or not they're the ones that get to make this decision, whether or not the property tax is increased or not. To make his point about the, uh, the other school systems, and, and we're just gonna let them run it the way that they wanna run it, we're not being competitive. And by not being competitive, we're short sighted. And I, I'm not so sure that, um, some of the claims were either grossly fabricated about social security, and people of Hamilton couldn't afford it, because every other city and every other county in the state of Alabama has made a way for them to be able to afford it. We ranked one thirty-two out of one thirty-seven as a county, and dead last as a city in this county. I wanna know where our values are as a city, as a community. Are we gonna be short sighted? And, and, uh, um, only focus on our self-interests, or are we gonna look to another generation? What experience are we giving the, uh, uh, the students of elementary school, middle school, and high school? We're giving them a poor experience, and then we expect them, when they grow up, to come back and give their children the same poor experience? I don't think so. I don't think so. So, I, I am, I'm tugged on the values. I wanna have, I wanna see a, a people that can come together and see vision for the city, and see vision for the students of Hamilton, Alabama.
Amen? Amen?
I, I wanna say one more thing, since you got, uh, the only problem that I have with any of this about voting for this tax at the school, it's this. The only people gonna be voting on this and paying the taxes are the people living in the city limits.
Amen.
We're, 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 we're talking about a county school.
That's right.
Half of our students are not living in the city. They're not going to pay a nickel.
Absolutely.
I just want you to understand that where we're coming from here.
I pray to y'all so they go up the courthouse.
So, that, that is another story right there where we have, have, I don't know how many kids we have. Probably thirty or forty percent of them anyway, living out in county, cause all the way around. And these people are not gonna be paying a nickel to come in. And the people in Hamilton, like Wathas, gonna be paying a lot of city taxes for, through or forward to different families of them. But that's only, that's the only thing that I have against any of this is, and that's the reason I don't think the citizens of Hamilton are gonna ice this. Because they're gonna take on the whole school, and the others are gonna get it free. And you're getting nothing free in this world anymore. And I'm not against it, I'll pay, I'm not, you know?
Hey, just one quick question before on that. Scott, what is the state or federal law regarding the school bus routes? They're set up by God, I ask, from the state or federal?
Vote. But, um, we have some agreements with different counties about transporting kids in, like with Haywood, Mississauga, and Bear Creek, and Franklin County as well. But we're pretty limited as to where we can go outside of our jurisdiction.
So, the county school buses running outside of Hamilton city limits, that is not a law of Hamilton or Marion County schools. That is a law set by, for by the state of Alabama and by the United States government. So, we have no control over that. The only thing we got control of, um, is the sixteen hundred twenty-three kids at that school. And all I'm asking is, I met with the mayor, Mr. Gene, Mr. Hurd, multiple times this year. And we have looked at every avenue possible out there to create. I'm not an advocate for raising taxes by no means. I was probably one of the most conservative people we could ever see. However, if we voted these folks in, we have to trust them, that they say they don't, they're not fiscal, you know, as far as the monetary proportion of it, able to support the schools better than they are now. The only avenue that we have is to raise the property taxes. And the only reason why I say raise it at only five mills is, we would not be paying any more than anybody else in Marion County. We would be saying, paying the same, less than Winfield, less than Haywood. Five mills of property tax would cost the average homeowner in Hamilton fifty dollars. That's essentially a dollar a day. So, that, hold on, hold on one second, sir. That, that property tax would equate to equivalent about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Right now, Marion County schools ranks as one hundred thirty-sixth. This money would be earmarked strictly for Hamilton schools. That would put its Hamilton schools as a state alone school system, we'd be ranked one hundred twenty-fourth in the state of Alabama. If that's good enough for you, sir, and good enough for you, sir, you can vote that.
Okay, if you agree with me, I got another statement to give.
All, all I'm asking is, this is a democracy. All we ask is give the people a chance. If they're not for it, they'll vote no. If they are for it, they'll vote yes. That's all we're asking. We can debate this any other time. But we should not debate our children. Period. And I've asked them multiple times, Mr. Williams, on sales tax, multiple times, and they've said no. So, yes, sir?
I'd like to ask you a question. Do you live in a city?
Yes, sir. I sure do. Fifteen and a half acres. I'll pay it off.
Well, all these people that's got rental property, they can jack it up and take care of it.
Absolutely.
All us pitiful farmers out here, we can't tell them we're gonna.
I, I've talked to a couple of farmers in this community.
All right, we don't got no, no recall, we just have to eat.
But you were talking about the five mill, when the, uh, our department raised five mills, my department.
Three mills.
It was three?
It's three mills.
Okay, we were just three, man, went up two hundred and thirty-five dollars.
I don't, that would have to be in the county, yes, sir, suppose.
Does this tax you saying putting on us, is it gonna put the police in the school?
As, this money should go through the security. Security and education would be the first two. Now, what I do ask, Mr. Poseo, is that I think, uh, I think Superintendent Hogsworth presented, the council offered to pay up to ten dollars an hour by the Marion County Board of Education, and he asked the council to possibly match that. I don't know if that's came up yet.
Well, it's gonna cost probably forty thousand dollars a year per police, and so.
In my opinion, security should be number one. Security should be the first thing we take care of.
I say only about three, how many you gonna have, three?
That, that's, I couldn't answer on that.
Well, you talking about, that's right, I'm asking a question. I just wanna be making a plan in my mind. If the, this, if the city council then ain't gonna have to put three police in the schools, if it goes through, it'll be the education to put the police, the security in the schools.
They'll be like ten dollars an hour for each one, and will that pay the rate?
Well, what's the county paying?
What's the county paying?
Nothing.
That's not fair.
Our, our officers in the school.
Hey, I'm sorry, is the county not paying?
The county's paying ten dollars. Marion County Board of Education presented, they pay ten dollars an hour.
They don't, the county don't pay the ten dollars an hour.
Presented to Mayor Penny Stewart's ago. Now, I don't.
Penny's gonna pay the ten dollars an hour, not the city.
Right, Marion County Board of Education. Now, I propose this, that I, safety's number one, and Principal Devers, Principal Ballard, and Principal Hall's here, they can speak for that. I think, you know, this two hundred and thirty thousand dollars five mills, it only scratches the surface. I think our cities should do more. And I'm firmly believe with this group, if we get this passed, the things that we can do with this school, and they see, I think the city will come back and say, we wanna do more. I think the city should pay for the school resource authors, and let this two hundred and thirty thousand dollars go to education and classrooms. But if they won't do it, the first priority for that money should go to the, say, to our schools. This, uh, Washington Post, I showed the mayor of Post today, the Washington Post put out an article today, that, uh, what was, let me read it right here.
It's been, the, two thousand eighteen has been deadlier for schoolchildren than service members.
That's right. Washington Post posted today, two thousand fifteen's been deadlier to school, to students than it has service members serving this country. That's a problem.
Well, what about, what about now, you know, I'm a kid, but what about all these kids out in the county that's coming in, and they're, unless, we have to pay the taxes for them?
Scott, Scott, and Ryan, and Principal Devers are working on it. We'd have to only set up a foundation. We could not force those students to pay due to federal laws. But we could set up a donation. I know of five, that, and one gentleman spoke last, at the last meeting, that said that he would be willing to do that. That'd be set up as a donation to the city school system.
Well, you know, we're not a city school system, we're a county school system.
Hamilton.
We're, we're, we shouldn't be having to pay anything. I mean, the county, unless I'm voting, you know?
We have, exactly, we have. But other cities and municipalities have stepped up, and we ranked dead last, sir, dead last.
Could I say something about that right there? I don't understand how we got a C rating if we have the same faculty that we've had all this time, and all of a sudden, we get a C rating for our schools. Is this two hundred and thirty thousand dollars gonna fix that C rating up to A? I mean, what has happened? We got a C on the report cards from the state.
We've had the same superintendent, we've had the same family superintendent, we've had most of the time the same faculty. Are we gonna take this two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and it's gonna bring us back up to a B plus or something? You think, okay, then we're buying education.
That's right.
Okay.
All we're asking is allow us to vote, and we can debate this somewhere else. And y'all, y'all, y'all the only ones can do that. We appreciate it.
Well, that, that, I think that's the way this country was founded on it. That way, people have a right to vote on what happens, and you people that, uh, want it, you'll have to convince the majority of the people that, to vote with you and pay the taxes. Because you're gonna be paying them here in the city of Hamilton, and the people out, maybe you wanna move just out of the city limits, and you won't have to pay anything then. If we vote for it, well, you people are gonna be the ones, we're not. We're just giving you the option to, giving you a chance to vote.
Well, Gene, a couple of, a few years ago, they voted this city wet, that was supposed to take care of the schools forever, the taxes gonna.
I don't know, I quit drinking thirty years.
That's thirty-nine thousand dollars. Those twenty-four dollars.
If I had to quit, it'd have been better off.
Uh, I'm going to the next county commissioner meeting. Yes, sir. I, I've tried to go just look out for him, but I couldn't do my work obligations.
I have to repeat what he said. I have, I have kids that went to school in Hamilton. Safety, it crushes me to see the government, it's been a huge inconvenience. To hear it is far as the world can handle. But I'm like him, if we're going to, and I pay my share, I have rental property, I'll pay my five mill, that's what you did, five, or whatever, uh, I'll pay them. But shouldn't it be everybody that works or comes to the store? Is there not some way to do that before everybody shares equally?
The only way we can do that, and that's due to the state, federal regulations on the bus routes. The reason why students that live outside of Hamilton city limits comes to Hamilton is the bus routes run outside of the Hamilton city limits.
But can you see, can you?
I can see that, and the only way we can do that.
That's the problem, that's the only problem, you know, that's where I'm coming from.
You know what fits that? You gotta take some of that occupational tax that we've got and give it to the school. That way, everybody from outside, that can work here in town, would, would be paying. And all that, all that, Scott, you know ain't earmarked from nothing. That's going into general fund, so the city can take some of that occupational tax if they need to give it to. But don't raise the prom tax.
We won't give that money.
Listen, you haven't been on the council in a while, have you? Do you remember when we, do you remember?
About two year ago.
All right, you remember when we took over?
Yeah.
You know what was happening, don't you?
And they made money in there.
You know what happened? Eight million dollars spent, and it was spent on nothing to pay it back?
Yeah, and you looked at two of them and thought against it too.
Yeah, I know what I, but I wanted everybody to understand, we don't have the money.
I want them to understand, there's two of us who need to get some.
Oh, yeah, you did, but I'm just saying, we don't have the money. We took over, the reason we ran for this job was to try to get the finances of Hamilton straight back out.
Well, I'm agreeing with you, Gene, everybody's not gonna be paying this fair.
No, they're not.
It's definitely gonna be that, but.
But we just wanna vote, we just wanna be able to have a, have, have a vote.
We're trying to get our, get back to where we can have some money to make, donate to.
Mayor Page, am I correct by stating that right now, the city of Hamilton does not have the resources available to, to give the school any additional resources?
The, the way we made our budget, Steve Sherr is about having an occupational tax on our workers that come here and work. We couldn't leave our budget without that occupational tax.
No, I, I know where they should waste that, and this council up here knows where they should waste that too, that could be cut off, and, and, and they know that. But I'm part of the school getting some money, but let's just be fair about it, and, and, and go on about it.
Do you not think that Hamilton should pay the same as?
We're not, like Ken said, we ain't home city school system. If you wanna start.
You and Hackett Burton, not either. They got, they have, they have ten mill too. Winfield has a ten mill.
Things that, that may need to cut back on some, you know, they may, they look at it as a board itself, looks like, not the city, city can't do everything.
Mr. Estes, you served on the Marion County School Board. Does the Marion County School Board have any zero, does it have any discretionary money available with a ten mill property tax that's required by the state of Alabama?
Talking about the Marion County Board or the Winfield?
Yeah, Marion County Board. This is what I said, Marion County Board.
He's been on board.
You're on Winfield? Now, Winfield, what size mill, eighteen and a half?
Mills equivalent thinks about fifty-eight. If you count sales tax, you convert that to millage.
So, fifty-eight mills?
Give or take.
Give or take those.
Hamilton's ten. Fifty-eight to ten.
Now, don't quote me about that.
No, don't quote me on that.
I know people tell me that. Somewhere in that ballpark.
I know, I know the fact is...
That's like you're gonna have to go to the bank tomorrow.
Winfield's eighteen and a half. And Hamilton's thirteen and a half. Millage. The state requirement is ten. That's the mill. That's what Marion County needs. So, every citizen in here that lives in Marion County pays ten. Every citizen here pays additional seven and a half in the state of Alabama and six and a half in the county. We all pay three additional for the fire tax. Everyone else in this county, every other city, you and Hackleburg, Bryant, Winfield, all paying more property tax than we do. That's all I'm proposing. That's the only avenue we've got. In one year, sir, we fell from ranks one-twenty to one-thirty-two. We're gonna sit here next year and say we're one-thirty-seven? That's all I'm saying. We cannot continue to let another year go past and these kids sitting up there. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. What does Winfield and what does Hamilton do in their city's school system about kids that are out of the city limits? Are they allowed to come in?
Hamilton forces, they don't pay. Yes, ma'am, they're allowed to come in.
They're allowed to come in?
Russell charges.
Russell charges, Russell charges. Hamilton does not charge. I'm not familiar with Winfield. But, but we, but we are proposing, we're not, I'm not a member of the school. I'm just, I'm advocating for kids. That's all I care about. I don't care how we get it done. It's the end result.
Well, I run the senior center here in Hamilton. So, you've got a lot of seniors in this area that doesn't have children in the school systems.
Correct.
You have a lot of children, right?
And I got my state, it's not that bad. And certain areas, yes, they pay property tax. I wonder if they have...
So, you've got that.
We'll say you come back, Scott.
Okay. I said, I said, prevent that there. If you pay your five dollars extra from other social security from anything, Sears, if I get a five dollars from Sears, I gotta pay the priority tax. I check them out today.
I was asking. I was asking a lawyer. I don't have a lawyer. I don't have a lawyer.
I work for him.
I'm gonna talk to county commissioner next time.
Why are you getting them to vote?
Before.
They're waiting to get the county commissioner.
Cause they're gonna do more too. All we're asking here is the city to let the people vote. The city elected these people. They ought to be able to let the city speak. Whether we're against it or not, that's, that's what we're gonna find out and post. Scott, you're fixing to run for county commissioner. What's your stance on that? You, you, you got the floor. What do you think? You're running, you're running county commissioner. What do you think?
What's that got to do with what you say?
It has nothing to do with that. I'm just saying, nothing's ever been done. Nothing has been done. Exactly. But this don't have them do that. I'm talking about, let's do this and let's go do some more. But this is the first step.
What do you mean, nothing has ever been done?
Nothing's ever been done in the county.
I've, I've been, I mean, I, I, I went to this high school when I, I know this doesn't matter, but in ninety-two. And, um, it's only getting worse. I mean, we are...
They're not even listening to one.
Oh. Okay.
Well, whatever. Well, I don't think...
All, all the city, all the schools...
I mean, I'm getting a ten percent for that.
It's, it's just, it's getting worse and worse and...
Let me get a vote. That's all I have.
Tell me, do you have any questions for my...
Uh, I just want Scott or someone to tell everybody what the definition of a property tax is so that everybody's on the same page. Uh, everybody knows exactly what property tax is when it's said. Like, your reply to my question, my answer was all four classes. So...
That's a question to ask for a review, Mr. Cooper. Well, there's four, there's four classes of property throughout the state. As Mr. Williams mentioned, there's residential, commercial, which are taxed at different rates. And then there's, um, a tax on more of your personal items. As well, that's class four. But in each of those, they're not even a little differently. I think, Mr. Williams, you pointed out, basically, commercial is taxed at twice the rate of a residential. That's why I think Mr. Cooper had said, on your hundred thousand dollars for residents, there's an extra fifty dollars for a five mills property tax. But if it's a commercial building, it'll be a hundred dollars. It's the information we had received. But we couldn't exempt any particular piece of property we've voted into that. But there may be some issues with exempting some property.
What, what, what in the world can you do like on M P N? If that plant's worth, we'll say, a million, fifty million, a hundred million dollars? What in the world would they do?
And, I mean, and that's a, a fair point. And they, they will obviously be the ones that will pay more. Cause I'm not for certain as to what their value waste, their value waste is, but it will be significant.
When I was on the council the first time, they straightened us out. We started to do this to build that divided industrial park. And they just, I told us, and they had leave Hamilton before they paid. That's what they said. And I think y'all should check on that people before we get into this because you can't change it, I mean.
No, I'm, I'm gonna go back. I, I have some questions for some other people based on what, what they said and, and some different things down through here, um, about the bond issue that we're still paying the seven dollars on and, and and why things haven't gone back like they said they would and, and different things. So, I have a lot of questions, but not, uh, not any other for that right now.
Mayor, if this passes, what about the alcohol tax? Is it still gonna go?
Well, we, we've never considered, uh, reducing any gifts to the schools. That's thirty percent is dedicated. I don't have any plans to change that. We might have to contribute to the S R O program for the school's security officers. It, it appears that we're gonna get some money from the county. The county can't actually put a gun on a man's side. We've gotta deputize him or swear him in as an officer for even carrying a gun. We will arm the people in the, in the school and keep them, uh, safe. And so, all that falls under an umbrella of either city or county. So, if here's in Hamilton, that the city will be taking care of S R Os and we'll be there.
Can I get more of a voting?
Unless the state passes, uh, a law to pay for those officers, I think it'll be our luck to pay the difference on those.
How much, how much, how much money does a school tax put in the school on thirty percent a year?
Thirty-nine thousand dollars.
How much?
Thirty-nine thousand dollars. It was last year. It's twenty-four dollars.
Twenty-five dollars.
Sixteen, it's twenty-four dollars and thirteen cents a student. Which ranks lower than Brean, Mr. Bowen. Brean was thirty dollars and fourteen cents last year. Lower than Brean. We should be more.
Superintendent, they can do something.
Make, make a lot of money. Or certainly.
As a councilman.
I'm from Hamilton.
Yeah.
Then I, then I wanna do what's going on.
Been here a long while.
From, from the council and mayor's position, uh, this has all come to us, uh, without any, uh, knowledge that it would show up this year, but it's a matter of, of interest to the community. There's people interested in seeing this new tax passed. And I'm sure there's gonna be opposition. That's why voting, uh, is, is a good way to decide things. It's always been the American way. It is, democracy has a vote. And, uh, if we don't allow a vote, uh, you know, it's just that we've taken a hard line and possibly the schools will go liking for, uh, for the things that they need. I don't really know the finances of the schools well enough to address the, the needs. We've been told, uh, this group that's coming addressed us, that they have discretionary spending needs inside the school that aren't being let, uh, to buy certain equipment, lab, uh, uh, equipment, uh, technical things they need. We've been told this. I don't know how much money they have. It's, it's not my business to know about the Marion County school system per se. I need to know about Hamilton's finances. I know a good bit about that. If you wanna get, ask me questions about that. We've got about five million dollars in the bank today. Uh, we've got about sixteen million dollars worth of debt. And we pay our bond payments as they come due. We hope to retire some of the wind debt early. But it just depends on how much support we have in Hamilton from the citizens as far as, uh, tax revenues coming in. That pays all of our bills. The only money we have to operate on is the tax money that we collect from sales tax, occupational tax, privilege license, alcohol tax, whatever is, looks like a tax and comes to us as we, we operate the city on it. And we've got two hundred and eighty inner-city miles of streets that are breaking down. We're gonna have to find a way to pave those streets eventually. We have no money practically in the paving. We've got three hundred thousand dollars in the bank in our paving fund. We probably need five million dollars to fix our roads up for the, you quit grabbing about knocking your cars out of line and busting a wheel and those kind of things. So, you know, money's not plentiful in the city. We operate the city under a budget. We have to do what we can do with the funds we get. But money's not replenished. I don't know about the county's money. I know they get money, uh, sent to them to pay the teachers and, uh, run the buses and certain things. But I don't know how much extra money they have in their tail. I couldn't tell you if you asked me that question or not. But they're telling us that we are a shortfall. We're paying twenty-four dollars per child per year. Where others, uh, school systems around us are paying more than that. Considerably more in, in some of the cities. And, uh, so they're just telling us we should be a sand of ourselves and we should come forward with some more money. So, that's what we're trying to do is allow the people that want to raise the millage on real, real property about, uh, chats to vote on it and say, we do or we don't. I can't say that to the people. People that have a heart to vote are gonna vote it in or vote it out. So, I mean, that's why I wanted to ring into a vote. I didn't solicit them to come down here and ask us to do this. It's the, it's the vehicle to get it done is what this is. We're the entity that can get it done. We can put it on about and put it before the people. None of us are trying to pass a tax. That's not what we're here for. We, we do have to operate the city on taxes. That's the only money we have to spend. It's the, the money that comes in through our revenue of taxes. And, uh, we don't have bake sales. We don't have quilting bees. We don't raise any money like that. We get the taxes. We budget each year what we're gonna spend through a budget. We, it's about seven million dollars a year is what we expect to spend this year of the funds that come in. That's kind of a balanced budget. It's kind of level. And that's what Mr. Cantrell, our accountant, said we should adopt as a level budget so that we can run our city and keep it somewhat orderly. We pay our police department. We got a power, power department. We have a street department. All these people have to operate, they have to get paid. Recreation, all these things have to operate on just our tax money. So, you know, we operate on the funds we get. We hope the school could operate on the funds they get. They're saying they're short of the money in, in the classroom. So, that's what this is about. They, and, you know, I don't really have all the answers. I just wanted to be able to put it out to the people to decide. I think voting is a very powerful way to decide something. And, uh, I'm not gonna tell you to vote for it or against it. Vote your heart. But, uh, so we were hoping to get it to a, a position that we can allow the vote. But I'm a little confused. We got a lot of questions unanswered. And we've been asked also, if the tax were to pass, how we're gonna govern this thing. This council has never done this. We don't have a clue yet exactly what we need to do to put it in the hands of the school and how to administer it. So, there's a lot of unanswered questions. Tell me, do you have any to think?
Do you have a rough draft proposal of... You have it?
Yes, Scott's got it right there.
Can we see it?
It's right there.
And Tyler, to answer your question, uh, a little bit about Mr. Williams, he said, I asked Barbara, uh, Mrs. Cooper, complete exemption of property taxes, total disability, if someone's on full social security disability, or they're over the age of sixty-five with a taxable income less than twelve thousand dollars, and it's only on a primary residence up to a hundred and sixty acres. So, that's your exemption if you get over twelve thousand.
That'd be like the man that's white, girl, six eight, we go to twelve, right?
I assume it would be a compromise if, if they're on the property.
When, um, and I'm all skilled over this. It's my understanding from our meeting last Wednesday, and I'm gonna ask him, cause he was there and you weren't, that should this, when, when everybody votes, should this pass, this will actually go into effect in May of nineteen?
That's my understanding.
When, when will the collection start? That's not written in here. When is the collection date?
That's when it starts.
Okay. Okay. So, if, unlike, the way I understand it now is the property tax that we pay in nineteen is actually for our property in eighteen. But you're saying that if this goes into effect in May of nineteen, then it will actually be collected in October of nineteen?
That's my understanding. I, I mean, this is outside of my realm. Like, if I counted the school taxes, uh, for you that does this, that's why you told me.
And how, and we touched on this the other day, and I was still, I like to have a plan. Y'all know that it gets on your nerves because I, I like to know what's gonna happen and sort of have a plan. If, um, if the payment is made to the city in two increments, October, November, and December, how, how are the schools, how are the schools gonna come to us and ask for the money? Are y'all going to be here, uh, the second meeting in October and ask for the money? Are you gonna wait until after the first of the year? I need to know our, what, I mean, I know we're gonna be handling the money.
You're here at first meeting.
Okay. So, what you're saying is, okay, October the fifteenth, we get our first payment of your money?
As soon as you're ready.
And then you're gonna come in with a proposal saying you need to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do security work in the high school, and we have thirty thousand dollars. thousand dollars. So, I'm just, I'm a little confused on how, I'm confused on our role.
In your work session Wednesday, we talked about that, and I said, "That would be up to you guys how that's divided, but if you want to divide it equally between our three schools, it would be fine, or if you want to work on a specific project at each school, that would be fine, as long as it's divided equally among our three schools, we'll be fine."
Well, see, at, at that time, and I've asked since then, I was under the impression that the city would receive your tax money as a lump sum at the end of the year.
Yes, ma'am.
But now it's my understanding that it's, it will come in two payments monthly, so I'm needing to figure out the city's role since we are responsible for it.
It would probably be easier for the city to do it either every six months as, as you do the tax money now for the alcohol. If that's easier for you guys, that's great, or every three months, whatever's easiest for the city council is fine with us.
So, that's something that we need to get with the principals and the superintendent with, and make a plan so we know what's going on.
Right. There's, um, that's the one proposal we proposed, that this, we proposed was, y'all appoint a board, an advisory board, to work as a liaison between y'all and the school. Y'all have nothing to worry about with the city. They would be the ones working between the two entities to disperse the money. It would be appointed by the city council. That was proposed on the.
Right, and then, you know, Scott told us last time that ultimately at the end of the day, that it came back to the council, and then in Wednesday's meeting, it came up that, you know, there was, we did not have to have an advisory board, because at the end of the day, the council will make the final decision on how the money's spent, and that's why I'm sort of needing a plan. And we did discuss, you know, would it be split equally between the three schools, uh, just exactly how it's gonna, how we're gonna handle it, and that's something that we is agree, we're gonna have to talk about, because it, it does seem to be fair. It doesn't, you know, y'all are, the three principals are gonna have to work together, and the council's gonna have to work together, and we're gonna have to come up with a plan, um, so we know what's going on. And just like with the, uh, with the collection and, and when that was gonna start, originally I was under the impression that if it passed in May of nineteen, or if it passes this year, collection would start in May of nineteen, or assessment would start in May of nineteen, maybe that's the correct term. But then we would not actually pay until October of twenty. I was under the impression in my head that, you know, it would work like property tax. It would go a year behind, but, um, Scott's saying that it's gonna start immediately.
Yeah, no, the assessment happens in May, and, and then may, then on collection, but it may be some time. Either way, the council will have considerable time to, after a vote, if it passes, to determine how to spend money.
We're gonna say that more than this right here. We're a long ways off from.
Yeah.
And what that is, did they notice, the notice of the election about?
My question. Mayor, council? My question is, and I understand there's deficit in the education fund, and I know this has been statewide, but my question is, after reading a lot of articles, would a lot of the deficit be from dropouts and those taken out of school to be homeschooled? Are we dealing with some of those issues here?
Hopefully we can deal with all the issues, including their safety and improving their classrooms and all the way down to the elementary school. I hope we can, and, you know, enhance our educational program throughout.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes?
Um, part I was gonna ask, you know, you got, I guess I always try, which one can you get the most money for, for the number of students that you got? And when you're talking about, I'm trying, I mean, brilliant, you say they're getting more, why don't they get more than Hamilton?
They have special, they have a sales tax, uh, I believe, I think Clint referenced to that.
A sales tax?
They have a sales tax. So, it was Hackmore, so it was you and have a sales tax.
Okay, since you're gonna get a one percent, you're gonna generate around two hundred eight and three hundred thousand on five vehicles every year. Say three hundred thousand. You got three schools. That's three years you're gonna take to generate nine hundred thousand.
Okay. I'm all for one cent sales tax.
Then one, one cent, if we let the people vote on that, that generates almost nine hundred thousand in one year.
Um, I'm all.
Take it off the books in one year. Would nine hundred thousand help?
Absolutely. But the mayor and Mr. Jean, I'll let the people vote on it. You tell them to vote for it.
If they can get the most money, yeah.
Absolutely.
If they can get more for the ones who send the sales tax, then they're gonna be able to get more.
I'm all for nine hundred thousand to vote in one year.
Good.
Then we're gonna have a ten percent sales tax, and then you're gonna run everybody to you below. If we're else, you're gonna lose more than.
I really do hope it's on our one year.
Well, you can't do that. They got operational now.
Oh, well. Anytime you put a tax or anything on, everybody's here, no. It never goes off. It's forgotten.
Amen.
This property tax never goes off either.
No, in the state, that's it every year, so they have been a conspiracy.
Better to keep your money in property, you need to pay taxes.
Let's put the sales tax, I'm not gonna say it.
Scott says something.
We can't.
It's never.
I, I, I like, I like watching some of the rest of the community here. I, I think we need just take our time to look at it. I don't think we need to hurt the businesses we got in here. We need, y'all to think this thing over. We don't want to hurt the N T N or, or, or Bathware, whoever want the business. I, I, we sure don't want to hurt nothing else coming in here, and I, I heard we got some.
They're gonna send the N T N or Bathware here?
But to rebuttal that, the only people, the only thing that's struggling with this community is the kids. They're the only ones who are hurting.
Who?
Our kids.
Oh.
Our children, which should be our number one asset. Our number one asset. So, I don't care how we do it.
If you lose a plant, you lost it.
So, if I go somewhere, is it not gonna be higher? Not gonna go somewhere where, where their tax meals are higher? If we're the lowest in the state, they can't go anywhere.
I would like to stay.
The big boys and, and everybody pay next year. I'm ready for it. I'm ready to pay whatever I care about.
We have all the servants now.
You know, I counted here a lot of votes, about fifty. There's about fifty people in here, and you know how many voters we got in the county? Well, they're not here, but they're gonna vote in. So, you know, all of us here, we can't make up our mind. You got voters out there with fifty people sitting here, and I figure divided one way and the other, and we're sitting up here trying to make up our minds what we're gonna do. We're gonna have to think about this thing, I think. I don't know about everybody else, but I think we're gonna have to think about this. We wanna do what's right. We've run to do what's right for four years, and I'm through, and I figure some more of them on here are through, and I'm still gonna try to do what's right.
So, Mr., Mr. Sam, you're saying that you're not, all that we've allowed to do, ask you to do is allow citizens to vote? That's it?
Yeah, the only thing.
Everybody can say their books.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm for letting the citizens vote. The only thing to me that's wrong with that is this. Half the kids in schools, parents are not gonna be paying any taxes.
They can express that with a note. If they're against.
Well, that's what I'm saying, yes.
That's all we're saying.
I mean, I'm, I'm.
And I want everybody to know that when they go to vote. That's all we're asking.
Let me clarify this. You said that when you spoke with these gentlemen that you've met with, the mayor, Jean, and and Mr. Williams, that when you spoke with them, you did ask about sales tax?
We asked about everything. We talked about everything.
So, you're not adamant on property tax? You just want the money?
We, we're sold about.
You want the money. You don't care how we get it.
I don't want the money.
You want the money from schools.
That's right.
You want the money from schools, and you don't care how we get it.
That's right.
Sales tax, I'm gonna vote.
We both.
We both, yeah.
We both.
Yeah.
We both.
Yeah.
I think, I think everybody's together on the fact that kids need to be a bigger priority, and we've continued to let it go for years and years and years and years. Everybody wants to talk about industrial recruitment and, and, and bring the industry in. Small towns, in my opinion, are schools and churches. Our, and our schools are struggling, and our kids are not safe. So, we can sit here and debate this all we want. My opinion shouldn't even be up for debate. But y'all are the only ones that can give the people the voice.
But if we can come up with money some other way.
Absolutely.
That's us.
Absolutely.
We gotta, we gotta do this. We're, we just can't be pushed into voting yes or no, just because it's for the kids. I understand it's for kids. I'm for the kids. I got three grandsons, and by all means, I don't want nothing to happen to them, but we need to do this right. We don't need half this town mad and the other half.
Well, they're both a. They're gonna please everybody, so.
You're not gonna please nobody, but there's ways to do this, just like I said with the Winston Sales Tax for one year. You're generating nine hundred thousand in one year. I agree. That, I'm saying, that's.
Can we take that out of the city budget? I've asked that.
That's what I'm saying. We're gonna have to discuss this, and we're gonna have to figure out a way, but we can't be just yes or no, just 'cause the people may vote for it, they may not vote for it. You'll be wasting school, the school's money for this election to be taking place if they're gonna vote no. So, it's gonna work in your favor if this is done right.
Let's do it right. Let's do it right at the top. Let's do it. Instead of waiting, you know, we keep the post-homeland, post-homeland.
We just kinda like.
Well, let's, let, let the people vote, let's, I mean, let's do it. It's not real hard. It's not rocket science.
But if we can come up with another way, you don't wanna find out?
Been put off for like fifty years.
I would, I would, I would wait another six, seven, eight months for it.
No, it's not gonna be that.
I think you ought to put it off tonight, and I checked with Walmart, I checked with N T N, Bathware, and some of these, uh, other large buildings around here. And I mean, that'd be, I'd just wait and say, "Which, which can you afford? Sales tax or can you afford property tax?"
I checked with Hamilton Home Builders and C I S by entry.
Well, I wouldn't blame them, because they got theirs diverted for ten years. I don't believe they'll check with them, they're pretty happy. For what you think? They're like somebody else I know who's out of city limits, they don't cost them nothing.
While we're checking, we got elementary students walking outside there in the classroom. They need protection. We gotta take care of our kids.
Why was that school built like that anyway?
But it, but it is our responsibility to take it. And it's been all, that's been a big debate all year.
I went to the middle school. You wanna like get to the priest. No, but I went to. And if they wear my Georgia sculpture, you said how we get it, would say that you say it puts, to generate more money for my sales tax and better to everybody? And then they get more?
I, I really don't know that for that's the matter. I've heard, uh, a lot of good discussion here, uh, this is government work. The council is gonna take all this into consideration. We're not gonna vote tonight, but we are gonna vote real soon. We've got just a few more things that we gotta figure out. If it should pass, we wanna be ready, and we've just got a few resistance we wanna work on, a few more rules. We might even consider another way to raise this money. We plan to do something, but truly, we want everybody to be treated fair. I said that the first night, and I am not about being unfair to anyone. I do intend to make a decision soon. This council, they've got good heads on their shoulders, they're gonna help me with this decision. We got a good attorney captain that's back here. Don't get impatient with us. It's not gonna be way down the road. We're just not gonna ring to vote tonight. We're gonna have a little more discussion in our house. We can't actually have a meeting where we can level one another, 'cause it's all gonna come out in the paper from that state. We can't really give our hearts without it being made public. If we could have a discussion in a group, it's illegal to do. The city council can't share our hearts. We have to share everything we're thinking with the public. That's how you be transparent in, in city government. And we're gonna honor the rule of the government, but we're gonna sign this up pretty quick for you all. We're gonna seek some more help from our attorney to formulate this. We may raise the money a different way, but we're gonna try to help the schools and the kids. We're not against the schools nor the kids. We just found out that it's our role to come forward with some money, so we're gonna try to provide this money. And, you know, uh, last year, uh, I, I begin to get worried of this, uh, and believe me, it's been driven home to my mind that we are behind the other schools. And, uh, but let's find a, a way to raise this money that's fair to the people. I don't wanna be unfair to anyone. And I know it's a democratic society, you're just saying, "Let's just vote." Well, it's what we say, there's a big picture here. You know, we've got industry in Hamilton. We don't wanna dampen the spirit of any of it. That's what provides these jobs for people. That's what gives us the occupational tax that we collect, help their real skin. So, in the spirit of fairness, let's be fair all the way. The city does plan to help. I've heard enough of the hearts of the people already here that we plan to help. We might do it a different way, and I just want time to think about it.
I have one last question for Scott. Once permission is given for the vote, however, whatever the vote is, what is the deadline for it coming into effect, May of nineteen? What is the deadline?
That's it.
I know, but it doesn't, if we, if we don't make a decision until July, it's still not gonna come into effect until May of nineteen. Okay, so you had lost anything?
I, I have lost anything.
The kids have lost anything, because it's still not gonna come into effect until May of nineteen?
Is the city, the city of Hamilton, the council of Hamilton gonna protect our kids starting next fall? We got three more days of school left. That's all I care about.
I mean, we're working on that. We're talking.
We're working on that right now.
We're talking, read the papers and S R Os, we're talking about that. I'm behind it a hundred percent. I said, we're, we do, when this council, when someone said there was no money, and we, we try to come up with this, I said, "We're responsible the day we found out that we needed to do this." The county is responsible for this. The city's responsible for this. There is nobody that don't, but the city cannot put the bill for out. You try asking about the permissions, they gotta, they gotta say so with this too. You scoop over, they gotta say so with this. It's a, it's all working together, and that's what, that's what's gonna take. We've got to work together. And we're all for it. We're all for the safety of our students. We watch them, we know what's going on, and there's nuts out there, and it's hard to prepare for somebody that's gonna shoot somebody else. It's just hard to prepare for that. You know, but we're trying. We're trying.
We thank you all for attendance tonight, and we are not turning deaf ears to any plea. We're listening to everybody. We are everybody's government. We serve everybody in Hamilton, and that's what we intend to continue to do. We are not gonna ever jump because someone said jump. We're gonna jump when it's time to jump. And that's not the way this council's gonna operate. So, depend on if you're getting a decision, we're gonna make a decision that we can all live with. We, we gotta lay down on our pillows at night. We've gotta live with ourselves. We're gonna make sure we make a unanimous decision in whatever we do. And even us, sometimes you see a no vote up here. We, we discussed it to the best of our ability. We're gonna pass the rules and the laws that we think are best for everybody. Sometimes we may not all fully agree here, but we try to do that. We try to reason with one another. We're just not ready to vote tonight. Is there any other business to not, to come forward to council? If not, we need a motion to adjourn.
How much did it motion?
One second. One second. Yeah? I'll. We'll be in touch soon on this issue. Thank you.